The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everybody. This is the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, November 10. And let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mark tonight.
Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America to the Republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Let me just start with my usual reminders, which is that this broadcast is being recorded tonight. And also, if you are asking questions or submitting comments, they will also become part of the public record. If you have a question or a comment tonight, please write or submit your question in the question column so that we can see it. Because we sometimes, if you're raising your hand, miss your hand raised. So if you want to be sure we see it, submit your question in the question box. And so with that, we will start with open forum. So the first thing that I would like to say during open forum is, on behalf of the Select Board and also the town, I would like to thank everyone who has been involved in our town elections since really the end of August, starting with the primary. There are just way too many people to name to be thanked. But I'm going to try and sort of group you all in groups to say thank you. So first off, to all of the Town Hall employees and all of the town departments who assisted in the elections and who gave moral support to the Town Clerk's Office. Thank you all very much. The Westford Post Office, we'd like to thank you as well. You took it upon yourselves to deliver ballots to Town Hall several times a day and even over on the weekends to make sure that all of our ballots were counted. So thank you to the Post Office for going above and beyond the call of duty in this case. Thank you to the Westford League of Women Voters who stepped up to help in the elections. To all of the election workers who sometimes, when they were in our unheated open-air fire station in what would probably less than ideal circumstances. Thank all of you very much. Those who helped to sort the ballots, to count the ballots by mail, who worked on Election Day at the polls, who maintained safety protocol for themselves and for others, who counted the ballots that night. Thank you all very much. This couldn't have happened without you. Thank you to the Westford Police Department, who is there to lend a hand and also who monitors our elections. Thank you to the Custodians at the five schools, who kept the schools open and safe during Election Day. And finally, and probably most important, not most importantly, let us just say finally, thank you to Patty Doobie, who, under whose leadership and guidance, none of this could have happened, who coordinated and organized it all. And thank you to her staff in the Town Clerk's Office, Andy Sherman, Alyssa Ingles, and Marilyn Frank. To all of you, we really say thank you. We appreciate all of your hard work, as I said, since the end of August. And all of you deserve a day off. And from what I understand, haven't had a day off even on weekends since September 1st. So thank you. So that's all I have for open forum. Does anybody else from the board have anything from open forum? Scott?
So I want to thank people. It's a premature thanks, but thanks to Ryan Copley and the Westford Cat and their staff for making tomorrow a remote Veterans Day, much like Memorial Day. They've changed up a little bit, but they've made some, I think, memorable service. I've not seen it, but you'll see tomorrow at 11:00. Tune in and remember our veterans and especially our very caring staff and Westford Cat team, who've really pulled together a nice town-wide program in a difficult time.
Anyone else from the board? Okay. All right. Moving along to our 7:05 PM item. It's a joint meeting with the Permanent Town Building Committee to discuss possible changes to the design of 51 Main Street due to COVID-19 and the next steps on the project. So Tom and Hannah, I believe you are out there.
Shoot. Andrea, I tried to pop some here. Yeah, it's not going through.
Okay. Can you? I have a voice. So Juliette, it just told me that Juliette Mount is speaking. Okay.
I'm sorry. For open forum, I was trying to put something into the chat to come up in line. And you moved so quickly to the next agenda item. I guess I didn't know I could just pop in like that. So sorry about that. I didn't realize the mics were open for everybody still. I came in through the chat. Just, it's a quick thing. For the Energy Committee, we have an opportunity to put the flyer that describes the Power Options Program that's coming up for Westford residents, starting in January. And we were hoping to tuck it into the tax bills for this coming quarter. However, the deadline for getting that into their hands for printing and envelope stuffing is coming up the end of the month. So I'm sorry to do this last minute, but I think I think we forwarded to you a copy and that it would be in your packets. It's the same one that we distributed at the special town meeting. It's a one-pager that just gives people a description of what the program is and where they can go for more information.
So Juliette, we did get it, but we didn't get it till about 4 o'clock this afternoon. And it really was too late to get it on our agenda. And in addition, I believe, I think Jody wrote back to Mike Berlinski to let him know, you folks need to connect with Christine Collins and coordinate with her, the insert. And then we can put this on our meeting, on our 11/2024 meeting. And, you know, and we can talk about it then. I'm assuming that we probably will be able to work it out between now and then, and we can just take care of it at that time. And that should still give you enough time to get it to the vendor, et cetera.
Sorry, I just found out about the deadline today, so I didn't know we needed to move this along. And I was in meetings all afternoon, so I didn't know that Mike had gotten a response back. I apologize. Thanks for taking a moment for me. I'll duck out.
No problem. No problem. Okay. Thank you. All right. So now moving to our joint meeting with the Permanent Town Building Committee. I see we have Tom and Kirk with us. And so if one of you guys want to take the lead and talk us through where we are at this point, that would be appreciated.
Sure. Thank you. So Tom and Hannah, Chair of the Permanent Town Building Committee. As you mentioned, Andrea Kirkware, Vice Chair of the Permanent Town Building Committee is also here in attendance, along with Scott Hazelton of the Permanent Town Building Committee. So we just wanted to have this discussion, this meeting with the board, kind of give you an update of where we're at on the project and just start to discuss, kind of where do we go from here with this project? Essentially, the project's been on pause since March. The last real action that we've held on the project was about the week prior to the pandemic hitting. We held a public meeting at the fire station. We invited Butters to the project to come in and see progress, the update. The progress would be on the design of the project. At that time, we're preparing to go to annual town meeting. So we provided some updates, showed them the status of the design, talked about the costs and potential tax impacts and things like that. So, you know, and then, of course, our world changed completely after about a week later. And so for the most part, we had not really done anything more on the project since. We've met a couple of times since. We've met with our architect, Chris Logan, from Context Architecture, most recently on October 26. And we talked about now, kind of, you know, where do we go from here in the COVID world that we're all living in? What could the potential changes be made to the design of the project, the design of the building in response to the pandemic? Or and what sort of program modifications, you know, could be needed? So Chris kind of updated us on what they're doing with some of the projects they're doing in other communities, similar projects, and some of the changes that we could be looking at for this project, without making any wholesale program changes. And so some of the areas that they're focusing are on approved means of egress out of the building, so that there's a clear path in and out of the buildings, touchless surfaces in the bathroom areas, eliminating things like air dryers, which is ironic that, you know, those became popular supposedly to kind of stop the spread of germs and diseases now that those are now not in favor because of the potential spread of the virus through the use of the air blower. Mechanical systems are also being looked at as far as improving HVAC systems, with advanced filter systems and also operable windows that would, you know, that would improve airflow. We also talked about, you know, improving the technology and things, areas like the meeting room so that we could continue with remote participation in a post-COVID world in the meeting room. So those kind of changes, you know, we kind of kicked around. But from a building standpoint, floor plan standpoint, we don't really see any, at this point, making any significant changes to the building. You know, unless we collectively have made a decision to eliminate some of the major program uses, which includes the meeting room and the three offices that are located upstairs for facilities, technology, and veteran services. You know, getting back to kind of the meeting room, we kind of kicked, obviously, that's the largest program space in the building. And we talked about, well, you know, should we look at reducing the space of this? Because, you know, obviously, right now, we're not even holding live meetings, but, you know, cramming 100 people into a meeting room right now would not be looked upon very favorably. But, you know, but what would be good or advantageous about that space is that, you know, it does allow for social distancing, or I should say, be easily adaptable for social distancing, where you could still hold a fairly large meeting in a space of that, you know, of that size. You know, not necessarily have 100 people in there, but you wanted to have, you know, an audience of 20, say upwards of maybe 50 people, that room could be easily adaptable for that. So kind of where we stand today, you know, right now, is, you know, the project's still kind of on pause. We looked at some other things that we could do, you know, as far as trying to reduce the size of the building. We went through a similar exercise back in 2019, and we looked at three different alternatives for, you know, making major changes to the building, limiting some spaces or going back to like a single-story building. And I believe that's in your packet. And so we looked at three different options. You know, again, this was in 2019, hasn't been updated obviously since. But, you know, we looked at, you know, the current space, which is two stories, about between 9,000 and 10,000 square feet. And then a one-and-a-half-story option, which would eliminate the facilities department, kind of reduce the size of the upstairs. And then a single-story option was essentially would only just build a building for a meeting room and a small conference area and accessory spaces such as bathrooms. So we, you know, we went through that exercise. You know, you have that information. You know, right now, the most recent cost estimate on the project is 8.5 million. That was updated as recently as March of this year, March, April. And so that's kind of where we stand. Kirk, you know, please jump in, anything else you want to add. But, you know, I guess at this point, we're, you know, we're kind of looking for some feedback, some direction from the board as to whether or not we, you know, do we continue on pause here for the project? Do we move forward? Do we look at, do we look at making changes of the building? As I provided in that memo, as far as financially, you know, there was a $320,000 appropriation that we're currently working on for the design of the project. We have not covered that full amount with context. There's still about $50,000, $60,000 left in the appropriation, as well as they still have 50,000 unused budget in their current agreement that we were reserving to move forward with the permitting process, which they have not spent yet. So basically, we were ready. If we got through town meeting, we were ready to go forward with the site plan approval process of the project as currently designed. But since then, we have, you know, essentially directed our consultants to put a complete stop on the project. Kirk, feel free to jump in if there's anything else you want to add.
Not really. I mean, I think you've covered the waterfront. I think, you know, the purpose of this building is obviously to collect the departments that were sort of sprinkled all over town and put them in a central logical place and bring technology, which is vital to underpinning all of our services, onto the central campus, which seems to me a really smart thing to do and also provide for obviously much-needed meeting space, both in the evening for a lot of our boards and also for the other folks that are located in the center campus. So, you know, to us, looking at it programmatically and revisiting it, there doesn't seem to be any motivation to make any major changes to what's there, but we're certainly open to your guidance and direction.
Comments, questions from the board? Tom?
Tom and Kirk, I appreciate you being here and presenting this update. And it definitely makes sense to look at air handling and touch-free surfaces and the like. You mentioned that you have looked at those things and gotten some input from the architects. Any sense of how that would affect the cost of the project?
Well, I mean, mechanical, you know, upgrading mechanical systems would obviously, you know, have, would have an increase to the project. You know, what, you know, what that impact would be. You know, I don't have those hard numbers. But the systems that they were currently planning on were fairly advanced already. So I wouldn't imagine it would be a large impact to that. But some of the biggest changes would be, we talked about like in the lobby areas and the entrances and having those as, you know, basically like supermarket-style entrances so that you don't touch doors, they just get activated by sensors. And that those, you know, those doors would open up. So I would suspect those would be probably the biggest, you know, the biggest cost impacts, those, you know, those changes, but not necessarily mechanical systems.
Okay. So if you don't have any major changes, and that's where, you know, obviously we're discussing, then the track that we're on would be sort of at the right time, doing more public education as we approach Springtown Meeting? Is that sort of the, I'm wondering what activities we would logically have on this program between now and then?
Yeah. I mean, I guess, you know, we could potentially move forward with the site plan approval process. That, you know, that's a fairly lengthy process, as we've, you know, as we've experienced on other projects, particularly most recently, the fire station. You know, that would, you know, that could take several months to get through. That's a heavy public involvement. And that may not, you know, depending on when that gets started, that may or may not be completed prior to town meeting.
Okay. Thanks.
Tom, I do have a question. I know you talked about the meeting room. I just wanted, I had a question about the offices, particularly the IT training room that's proposed in light of COVID, social distancing. How does the program work for that now? Does that need to be looked at and changed in any way?
Yeah, sure. We actually did talk about the IT, you know, the IT space particularly because that has the most amount of staff in the building, that department. I think the consultant, Chris was pretty confident that the layout that we have right now for that space, based on the number of staff, is adequate for a social distancing. Obviously, there would need to be some modifications to the workstations to, you know, maybe extending things like, you know, wall height to provide some sort of barriers, to provide a little bit more, you know, separation between staff. The biggest concern we had was the, we were planning on a small training area in IT. You know, it was only going to be a very small space in an interior room. I think it was planning on housing about maybe six people that they would have computers constantly set up that they would come in and do training on. And that's a space that, you know, probably is not adequately sized for what the intended use would be. And would have to revisit that to decide whether or not that's a space that we would still include or we just, you know, eliminate that together or if we could make provisions somewhere else for that type of, for that type of use. But the other spaces, you know, veterans, it's only one, you know, one and a half, one and a half staff facilities, as the same way, there's only two staff right now in that department. So we feel that the space that was, is being planned for those two departments is adequate, you know, is adequate right now.
Thank you. It was really the training space that I was concerned about because, as you said, it was small and it was interior. And I'm not sure that it works. And, you know, I, not for tonight, but perhaps at some point, a decision made whether we keep that space or just eliminate it and try and figure out how and where to do training, you know, in some other manner. But not, we don't need to decide that tonight. Other comments or questions from the board? Anita?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple of thoughts. And I think when I was looking through this layout of our different options, I felt like moving away from the two-story, the original design felt sort of short-sighted, right? I understand that COVID is completely changing the way that we do business, but I also feel like COVID is not around forever. And that if we were to move to one of the one-and-a-half-story options or the one-story option, we're defeating the purpose of bringing everyone together when I feel like so many departments are exploding out of their spaces. But at the same time, a concern that I have is if we move forward with the site planning process, Tom, that you were mentioning is pretty laborious or, you know, takes a long time. It's lengthy. So, okay. So if we, if this doesn't make it onto the warrant for annual town meeting, and we are talking about pushing it, you know, later or looking at the date or something. And if COVID is still around, then, then, you know, I'm not sure what, like, would it make sense to start that process if this doesn't make it into the warrant for annual town meeting?
Yeah. I mean, that's something we'd have to, you know, would have to think through. I mean, it, I would probably recommend that, you know, unless we have a definite date when we think we're going to move forward, then we would not begin the planning process until closer to that point. Yeah, there is kind of time limits on the approvals anyway. So I believe it's like maybe three years for the approvals before you would have to go back and refile or whatever. But, but yeah, I mean, if it's, you know, if we could be potentially in this for an extended period of time, you know, if we don't do annual town meeting this spring and we're going to put it off till next fall or, you know, even later, then, yeah, it probably makes sense not to move forward with site plan approval, you know, at this time. Because, you know, because basically, because, you know, the longer we wait, I mean, the more opportunities we have for other factors that could potentially come into play and which could impact the ultimate design of the building.
Anything else, Anita? I know you said you had a couple of questions.
I know you can see me toggling between like muting and unmuting. I guess my kind of follow-up question to that is, one of those other factors would be cost, right? So the longer we push this out, the higher the cost will be in terms of like, you know, labor and materials.
Yeah, it never goes down.
All right. Anybody else from the board have anything? Okay. I don't see any, I don't see any questions. And I don't see any hands raised. Um, so I think, unless, and correct me if I'm wrong, we really were just looking for an update tonight to see where things were, if there were changes that were going to be contemplated in light of COVID. I'm not sure we're, as a board, we're ready to make any decisions at this point in time. Countenance whether we want to go forward or not. I think there are some other factors and considerations out there we need to think about. So I think, I thank you, Kirk and Tom, and the Permanent Town Building Committee for all the information and for being here tonight. I think we need to consider it, take into consideration some other things that are going on. And we'll get back to you, I think, is probably where we are right now.
Okay. Great.
All right.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay. We are now at our 7:35 PM item, which is a joint media energy committee to discuss the special town meeting resolution of Article 14 to promote clean energy and reduce fossil fuel use to achieve the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' limit of net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 and determine their capability to take on this initiative. Okay. And I see joining us is Mike Berlinski and Matthew Rigert and Beth Perkins. So thank you. Oh, and Peter Burson is now popped up on the screen. So thank you all for joining us. And here comes Carol Morrison, whoever else joins us as well, welcome. Anyway, thank you all for joining us. Certainly appreciate it. I think, you know, where we left this, or where the board left this, is that before we made a decision as to whether we were going to constitute a new committee or a task force or constitute a new committee or a task force or bring this on the, under the umbrella of the energy committee. And how we were going to address the town meetings resolution. We asked for some input from the energy committee. And so I know that you folks met last night. And so, Mike, I think I know your chair, so I will throw it over to you to ask you to sort of, to report on your meeting last night and any suggestions or recommendations that the energy committee had.
Okay, great. Thank you. So Mike Berlinski, Chair of the Energy Committee. I did write up a memo and submit it. It is included in your meeting material. After our energy committee meeting yesterday, we had a discussion. There were members of the energy committee as well as other residents, including folks from Westford Climate Action who are joining the, the call now. The energy committee did not reach consensus and make a formal recommendation. We did have some good discussion, including that with interested residents. And I did try to capture a summary of that in the memo. I can summarize that very briefly here, but looking forward to, to the discussion. Bottom line, there is some additional information that we were hoping to get before we made a recommendation. Certainly, the energy committee fully supports the resolution. We did formally endorse it at a committee meeting. We believe that a lot of the content of the resolution is in line with the charge of the energy committee and in line with a lot of our activities. However, we believe that there is some activities required under the resolution that would be incremental, additional for the energy committee and challenging to do with our current staffing and bandwidth. So we understand there's a couple of different options for, for the town. The energy committee could take it on, a subcommittee of the energy committee could take it on, or another group, maybe a task force could take on the, the activities. In any case, the energy committee, many of our members would want to participate in the activity under the resolution. We, as I said, do have concerns about our current bandwidth. We could increase the number of members. However, doing so, I would have concerns about regularly achieving quorum because that has been a challenge in the past. At the same time, we do think having an inclusive group, diverse and expansive group to work on this effort is appropriate. We acknowledge concerns around having an additional committee that could be redundant to the scope of the energy committee. So we do acknowledge those concerns. So really, we, we were hoping to get some more information around some of the rules around subcommittees, task forces, and see what the interest is broadly, then we could make a recommendation on, you know, what kind of group, what group we would recommend to, to pursue it. So that's it for me.
Okay. Anybody else from the energy committee want to add anything to, in case, I don't know if Mike, you know, just add anything that might, you might want to say that Mike didn't say? Okay, seeing, seeing none. Beth and or Carol, as part of sustainable or climate, the Climate Action Committee, do, do you guys want to weigh in with your thoughts?
Uh, yeah, maybe I'll start. First of all, I'd like to thank the energy committee for the time they spent discussing the climate resolution at the end of their meeting yesterday. We participated for some of that. The resolution, as you all know, was endorsed by the select, the select board, the energy committee, and many local organizations, including 270 people who signed the petition. And at special town meeting, it was passed with an overwhelming vote. So the decisions that will be made by the select board, starting tonight, we believe are, are critical as we move forward to implement the resolution. The objective of reaching net zero greenhouse gas emissions in Westford is actually part of a worldwide effort that's being, being undertaken by cities, by towns, states, countries. And it's understood to be really the only roadmap to reduce the effects of climate change. So we appreciate the work the energy committee and the town has done in the past to improve energy efficiency. But we believe that the charter of the energy commission, the energy committee is not currently broad enough to incorporate what we believe is a very significant resolution, a very significant action that we are undertaking. So the current, just for people who may not understand, or, you know, may not have read it recently. The charter of the energy committee is to advise and assist the town by researching, identifying, designing, recommending, and implementing programs and equipment to encourage and achieve energy efficiency and conservation. This charter and, and the work it represents is important, but it doesn't include the reduction of fossil fuels, the increasing of renewable energy, and the decreasing of our carbon footprint. And we believe this is the foundation of any effort to reach net zero greenhouse gas emissions. So what, what we did as a committee is we researched what 12 nearby towns and have been doing with committees that have very similar goals. They've been charged with net zero or 100% renewable energy goals. And we provided you with a summary. It actually linked to the detail of their charters, their membership, and their names. And we believe that the task force that's tasked with the Westford Climate Action Resolution should have a similar scope and charter and membership to the information we looked at in nearby communities. We believe the committee would benefit a lot by including members of the energy committee. But the, it should have a broad representation and should report directly to the select board. We don't believe that adding non-voting members, you know, a subcommittee, which we talked, which did come up at last night's meeting with the energy committee. It was described as adding some non-voting members as kind of a subcommittee of the energy committee. We don't believe that that would be successful in implementing what we just described. So Westford Climate Action supports either a new committee, including representation of the energy committee, as well as other town boards and committees, or a re-chartered, a re-chartered energy committee with a new charter, expanded membership, and a new name. So we submitted this summary document in, in your, you know, in the materials for this meeting. I don't know if we want to bring that up or we want to go in a different direction now, but I think it's a good starting point for formulating the committee's charter and membership.
Yeah, we, we got those materials, Beth, and they were in our packet.
Right.
And believe it or not, we, we read our packets.
Right.
Mike, before I get back to you, let me just ask Carol if she has anything to add. You're on mute, Carol. Carol, you need to unmute yourself. Okay, well, she's figuring that out. Mike, did you want to add something?
Yes, thank you. Just want to respond. I, I would say that, that charge, the, the quote of the energy committee charge that Beth, that is only part of the full charge. There is some town websites that have just an excerpt of the full energy committee charge. There's another website with the full charge that has several long paragraphs, and it does include more items, including increasing renewable energy and reducing carbon emissions. So I just wanted to point that out. But still, I, I would agree that there is a lot of activity and needed activity and scope of the resolution that is beyond the current energy committee charge.
Okay. All right. Comments from the board? Questions from the board? Scott?
So I guess the, the first observation is I think a task force is meant to be short-term dedicated to a certain problem that's a quick, not a quick fix, but a, you know, one or two year fix like town farm, not a, you know, decades long fix. So I think this should be a committee, not a task force. You know, part of the fact you've got possible, we let us see of two committees, you've also got the need to create legions from one to the other, which just moves down a complicated matter. So if we make, you know, one committee. And the energy committee was a great charge in its day. Things change, technology evolves, needs evolve, and we now need to add more, I think, scope to that. So we, I think in my opinion, we take the committee and rename it, recharter it, give us some new members and we would, I think, expect that given the enthusiasm around this resolution, that we'll have members who want to join, who will want to be active and won't be a quorum problem. So it, to me, I think this is a pretty clear case of, of a new committee that is made from the shuttle of the old committee and you know, leads us forward. And the naming we can worry about later.
Okay. Other comments from the board? Tom?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking along the same lines as Scott. I think there is a lot of overlap, and I think it may become almost more cumbersome to maintain two different committee structures than to, to embrace the whole range of responsibilities in one, and then within that committee, if necessary, create sort of separate areas of focus. I guess I just wanted to ask Mike, I mean, my main thought here is just I want to harness all the positive energy and good work that's going on in the town already. And so is there any, is there any concern or anything on your mind, Mike, or the committee's mind that we should be thinking about if, if we were considering the option of expanding the charter, expanding the membership and having the new committee do both what the committee currently does and these additional responsibilities?
Yeah, thanks. My main concern would be to come up with a, a committee structure that could include everybody who wanted to participate in the way they wanted to participate. And I could see that, including some folks who would like a, an official seat and therefore a vote in, in the, the role of the committee, and other folks who would be okay just with contributing, you know, attending some meetings, submitting comments, monitoring what's going on, but not necessarily having a voting seat at the table. And just unclear to, to me and us at this point, how many folks really want that voting seat versus not, you know, committees can have, you know, 20 interested folks or, you know, a handful of interested folks, you know, who want that official spot. So that is un, unclear to me at this point. So again, I, I, I think this effort would be best with, you know, the most inclusive, most broad level of participation. I'm just not sure the right structure, given people might want to have their role be different levels.
Well, I, I think, I, I, you are right, Mike, and I, I, I'm not sure that we'll be able to sort of gauge the interest until we determine if we want to restructure, you know, expand the committee and, and have people and put that out to the public, into our residents, and to see who expresses interest and who submits citizens' activity forms. I don't think we'll be able to gauge exactly, you know, how big or how many people are actually interested and committed to, you know, attending committees. And of course, to your second point, you know, people who may just want to sort of, you know, attend for certain issues, certain concerns, but not, you know, not be a, a full committee member. Well, you know, all of, all of our meetings are open to the public, so they could attend, you know, and particularly now that we do it remotely, it's even, for some folks, it's even easier so that they could attend remotely, you know, for discussions on particular topics, contribute their, you know, their input, their knowledge that way, and yet not commit to, you know, regular attendance, et cetera, and everything that's involved with being committee members. So I think you can accommodate those folks as well. So. So, um, other, other comments or, or questions? Anita?
Yep, I had a couple of comments or observations, and thanks, everyone. I know you've put a lot of energy into this and putting all this information together. A lot of the jokes today. And, you know, I really appreciate the, the research that Westford Climate Action did with the 12 other communities and examples and stuff because it gave me like a better sense of what exactly you're looking for, what that looks like, and like sort of the logistics behind it, because I, I always appreciate the logistics piece. And what really stood out to me was just that within the energies committee's scope of my understanding of it, and I might not know the full scope of it. Knowing that there are more webpages I probably haven't seen, just that it's, the scope is really around the town, right? Like, they can't, they, they're not there to to direct of like private businesses, for example, or private residences about how, how to use their energy or to what degree. And so expanding the scope, I understand is something we're going to talk about, but I'm just kind of, something that like really jumped out at me was the different population groups and, and, and the examples that you showed. So like businesses, churches, and how much of a relationship building and fostering would be required and all the energy that would be needed. Energy, sorry, I don't know, I can't think of a better word, that would be needed to be put towards that to foster and build those relationships, to get everyone on the same page, to make sure this is something that everyone wants and is ready to move forward to with and stuff like that. And I just was like, that's a huge amount of work for the energy committees, especially sort of where, where they're, where they are right now in terms of like manpower, right? I guess one question that I have is, do we have an example of another town committee where we've done this before, where we've expanded the scope and the charge? Where there is like overlap, because it wouldn't make sense to me to have a brand new task force when we do have the energy committee. Because at some point, the left hand has to talk to the right hand, right? It needs to be coordinated. Energy committee members would want to be part of that. And then I would wonder if like we did that makeup as you proposed of like a select board liaison, a planning board liaison, school committee liaison, plus all these other stakeholder groups. Would the energy committee still end up being sort of the guide and like the leader of it, right? So in the end, it comes back to energy committee. So I'm going to stop rambling now, but if there are any committee examples of, of that change, it'd be helpful to, to hear.
Scott?
I, I think the most recent one would be affordable housing, where we combined a trust fund that was designed to fund housing with a policy committed to the housing committee. And, you know, both were eventually even meeting simultaneously because they had such a comment that we ended up at a town meeting collapsed those into one committee. So I think that's, that was sort of my view of, if you had energy and sustainability, someday they get collapsed anyway. Let's just do it upfront.
Um, other, other comments or questions? Okay. Wait a minute. We have a comment, just in answer to your question, Anita. Emily Teller did just write in and said, the cemetery committee had the green burial committee underneath them working on that issue. So I guess it, it sounds like that at least the cemetery commission for that discrete issue, you know, had, I don't know whether it was a subcommittee of the, or, or just a, a group of people. Jody, can, can you help out here? Do you know how that came about?
You know, I'm not exactly positive if, if we called it a subcommittee, but in, in looking into this issue, I have gotten clarification from John Giorgio. And any committee that has a subgroup of that committee go off and explore something else should have posting. should have posting just like the committee that they're under. So, you know, you can't just have half your members go off and do a project and not be subject to open meeting law. The other thing that we clarified is task force, and I'm not sure we've been 100% on this, but he, in John's opinion, a task force should be something that perhaps I appoint to review RFPs or make recommendations. But if the selectmen are appointing a group of people to accomplish something, that should be a committee. It should not be a task force. So maybe if we move forward, we should be a little more consistent. But I think of the Town and School Safety Task Force, which probably should have been named a committee, but, you know, we started off in one direction and we were going to look at mental health too and physical security and procedures, but we really expanded the mental health piece and had new people start participating on that. So that would be an example where we didn't necessarily have them all appointed to it, but we definitely had a new group of people focus on one aspect of that committee's work or that task force, which is really a committee. So I don't know if that helps personally, while I'm, while I've got the, the microphone here, I, I prefer this to be a united group and maybe with a subcommittee because I do see a lot of overlap. Projects we're working on right now with the Energy Committee are to reduce the emissions in the town. So I find it would be kind of confusing if I have a committee over here working on that and the Energy Committee working on it. I see redundancy. I think we can work it out if we figure this out together, but that would be my preference is to have that collaboration versus separate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Mark?
So, uh, I kind of feel like we're swallowing an entire ocean right now. In that the first action plan, before we start figuring out what kind of committee we need and who's going to go do what, is to understand our baseline. Cause I don't know how big this committee needs to be. I actually don't even know if nine months is the right timeframe, to be honest with you. And we've got local experts with the town facilities and Paul and Eric. Along with this group, the Westford Climate Action Group, who are very engaged apparently in this. And I'd certainly love to know what the baseline of our town is and where the largest areas of opportunity are before we go off creating some committee that we don't even know what's, what necessarily where they're going to focus and whether nine months is the right timeframe. So personally, I'd rather see us get a group of people together to come up with a baseline to present back to us, from which we can then go off and determine the size of a committee, the name of the committee and what the first sets of actions are. That's just my two cents.
But I guess, Mark, can you explain to me, when you say you, you want a baseline, you know, sort of, what, what does that mean? What are you looking for when you say you're looking for?
One of the areas of opportunity, that's what a baseline is, right? Is where are we today and what are the areas of opportunity relative to where we're trying to go? So I don't know what that is. Can somebody tell me what that is? Where's the largest area of opportunity for us as a town?
Okay, um. Let me, Carol, if, let me do it to Carol and then, and then to you, Peter, okay? Who still isn't? Hey, Eric, can you help?
Yeah, I'm here. Just very briefly, Mark, when we refer to a baseline, it's been a greenhouse gas emissions baseline. And that usually is done by a consultant who comes in and goes about that. I have checked around to see whether there are monies anywhere to, you know, to pay for that kind of a service. And unfortunately, it looks like there is no money for that. However, I think there are things that are a given that would be part of, the other thing is creating a roadmap of things that would reduce our carbon footprint. And those we know will need to do, we can prioritize, you know, which things get done first until we can, we have money for a baseline inventory of greenhouse gases. So that's, that's just, you know, and what we, when we speak of a baseline, that's what in our group we're speaking of. And I think that's common parlance in, you know, this sort of environmental world.
Thanks, Carol. Peter?
I think it was Matt.
I'm sorry, Matthew. Matthew?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cos for asking that question. I, I feel that the first nine months of this resolution is actually establishing that baseline. And the majority of the effort that we're talking about is doing that homework that some communities have utilized the consultant for. And we don't have those resources and the Energy Committee is concerned that we're going to be seen as that free consultant and we may not be able to deliver that. And we, we hope that there's people in the community that can come in and provide that service or collaboratively can work and produce that baseline, explore different sectors and what opportunities are out there for the next 30 years. But that's a lot of work.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to ask, go ahead, Tom, you go.
Well, I was just going to say, I, I think I agree with Mark that that would be a very useful place to start. And I also agree with Matthew, that's a big project. I guess I was thinking that would actually be part of the work of this committee. So rather than, I'm, I'm not sure how the work gets done until we pull together the people and give them that charter. I, I don't know if we can ask, at least I don't have a good clear idea myself of how, how the work gets done as a prerequisite to then creating the committee. So I, I guess I'm still in favor of reviewing the charter potentially as the next step. And then, you know, building out this committee to take on this broader role.
Tom, that was sort of going to be my comment as well is that, you know, isn't this a task for a committee to do? And so I think your suggestions all make good sense to me, which is, you know, let's, let's review the charter. If it needs to be changed, expanded, which it may, let's, let's, let's do that. And, and then let's, let's go about putting a, a committee together to do this and to start. Anita?
I was just wondering if, and I, I know that there's a lot of support for the, to get onto the warden stuff or special ten, when you have like a ton of signatures. But I was just wondering if Westford Climate Action or Energy Committee, if you have kind of a pulse on whether or not you know any volunteers who'd be willing to step up off of that. Like, I don't know if you have a like sense of that so far, anyone who'd be willing to be part of that task force with those skills?
Mike?
Yes, I have been contacted by one person. I believe they are a, a contact of Beth Perkins, but I have been contacted by one resident who expressed interest in such a committee working on that climate resolution. And a number of members of the Energy Committee would be interested in working on that effort.
And Beth?
And I would just say that members of the Westford Climate Action Group would be interesting, interested in participating and willing to get the word out. And I think we'd be looking for support from Jody with her newsletter, from the local newspapers and, you know, the different mechanisms we have for getting the word out. I think we have a lot of talent and in this community. So, um, I believe in, and the other thing that encourages me is that the committees very similar to this have been set up successfully in so many nearby communities that have, you know, include a broad range of people from different areas with different expertise. So that's encouraging.
So following up on your comment, Beth, Sue Thomas has written us that, um, and she's also volunteering at the same time. One of the tasks of the committee would be to establish the areas of the greatest impact. There are studies like project drawdown that are identified in general, those areas that give you the greatest bang for the buck. And in parallel, given the abilities available without funding, start to inventory carbon sinks and emissions in town. I would be willing to do that. So I think you just got another volunteer. So, Tom?
I just want to make sure Andrew, you saw you do have one hand up. I know at the outset, you did ask if people could please enter their questions in questions, but since Barbara does have her hand up, I just want to make sure you saw that.
I didn't see that. So thank you very much. So Barbara, if you have a, a comment or a question. Eric, you need to unmute her and Barbara, if you can unmute yourself, we can hear you.
All right, I am Barbara Terrio. I do belong to the Westford Climate Action Group. For about eight months or so, we have really made a lot of progress on this idea that is being propelled daily in the country and in the world to make our global emissions reduced so that we had, we can live in a community and a world that provides a very important space for our children and our grandchildren. So that's what's behind most of what the Climate Action Group started with. But we have been very keen on putting together a strong group of people dedicated to getting the roadmap idea together. And I have personally wanted to look at a separate committee, not that it would be moving away from the Energy Committee's mission or anything like that, but because there is a lot of passion and commitment in this endeavor. And that perhaps when we look at the research we need to do with what is the state doing on legislation and the the country, there's a lot of ground to cover. And I think moving forward is going to take some strong dedication. And people who would be on this, what I would call a new sustainability Westford Committee would be tasked with the research and all that goes into creating a really strong plan for our town. So I, I don't really see that coming up as a subcommittee. I don't see it as a task force. I see it as a permanent committee and I see it as a blend of people in town who are passionate about this subject and willing to work very hard on it, along with people from the Energy Committee and other areas of town. I'm just very, very, very unsure that we could do all of what I see as our charges by joining with the Energy Committee. I'm, I'm just not seeing that that is the contemporary way to go right now because this is a very, very urgent need. And I think we need to get working on it as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you. All right. I don't see any other questions or hands raised. So, uh, what is, uh, what I'm, I'm hearing from the board and correct me if I'm wrong, is looking at, taking a look at the charge of the Energy Committee, whether we want to expand it, modify it, rewrite it completely. And looking at, um, then, um, expanding this committee and seeing what the, uh, what the, what the interest is from the community, from other people to joining the committee and having one committee at least to start with. You know, in terms of, of, of Barbara's comments, this committee is certainly not a substitute for the Climate Action Committee that's out there already. And I would expect that if we decide, if the board ultimately decides to go with one committee, that the, the Climate Action Committee can, I would think would, uh, could be a resource for the Energy Committee and could help them and could, you know, provide them with, you know, the knowledge and all of the resources that you folks have developed over the last months as well. So I think that the, the, the town quote sanctioned committee, as well as the Climate Action Committee could basically, you know, work together and work hand in hand for the benefit of the town. So. Anita?
I was just wondering if we have a little extra time while we're still kind of exploring what this committee is going to look like? If Jody could reach out to some of the other towns, just to see how those communities are going, if there are any lessons learned that we'd be able to apply to, to this committee that we're forming here? In your spare time, Jody, because I know you have gobs of it.
I'm happy to do so, but Beth and Carol and others, if you have towns that you know are, are doing this, that would be helpful to me if you send me a list.
Yeah, I think, um, that, you know, there were a list of 12 towns that, that, that you folks provided us, right, Beth?
Right. And there were some that we thought were stronger than others. So we'd be happy to tell you what we thought were the top three, you know, that we should look at. And I would, you know, think at this point, maybe we wouldn't cross every T and dot every I right now, tonight and might, you know, take a look at, you know, what other towns are doing and think a little bit more about this before we finalize the charter and the.
We weren't going to do that tonight, Beth. Those were like next steps, okay? No, 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 we weren't doing that tonight. They were like next steps that we would be looking at, okay?
Okay, okay.
I, I know that Jody reached out to a couple of the other towns when we were researching for DEI, right? When we were trying to figure out what that was going to shake out, how that was going to shake out or how that was going to look. And what was posted on the website wasn't what was happening in real life. So it was really helpful for us, I think, in how we formed the committee. So if there's something that we can take from your list, that would be helpful for us.
Will do. So I think we, I think we sort of have at least a game plan right now, moving forward. Jody's going to get us, Beth, you're going to, you and Carol or whomever are going to get information to Jody and do a little bit of, she or somebody on her staff will do a little bit of research to reaching out to these towns, will gather a little bit more information. And when we have that information, we will reschedule this and we'll put this back on our agenda to continue the discussion.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Hang on, Mike, do you, do you want the last word?
Just wondering what, what the Energy Committee should plan to do. We generally meet monthly, so our, our next meeting would be early December. Should we plan to have another discussion then, or should we wait for Select Board to give us guidance?
I think, uh, you probably, you know, we probably need to gather some information and, and share that with you and share that with everybody. But in saying that, I, I certainly don't want to prevent your, your committee from continuing to have its own discussion and exploring, you know, what it, what it thinks it can do, how it thinks things should shake out, you know, what structure it might want to see. So I don't want to prevent you from doing that either.
Okay. Well, I think we'll plan to have this more discussion at our next meeting, monthly, early December. And if something is decided before then, then, then we will react to that. And if not, then we'll continue this discussion and then plan to come back to present to Select Board after that.
Sounds, that sounds good. All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you for all your time and all your, everybody's hard work on this. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, we are now at our 7:55 PM item, which is a community update on COVID-19 and the impacts on town operations during this period. And I guess really what the main topic of discussion is, is scheduling town meeting. So I think, um, then Jody can jump in as well. I, I think that the, it's really pretty clear to everyone that a town meeting in March doesn't make a whole doesn't make a whole lot of sense, since we haven't even started the budget process. We don't even know what the state budget looks like yet. The schools are still, you know, sort of working through remote and hybrid learning and issues with that. So it seems to make sense to me, and I think, Jody, you can add to this from also the, the town and schools' perspective, is that we should be looking at delaying town meeting from March and moving it out to, you know, late spring in order to allow our, all of our town departments the time to... Am I saying something funny? You know, to, to manage and to look at their budgets and to put them together.
No, I'm sorry. Nancy Cook just sent me a little message that made me laugh, but it had nothing to do with any of you. So she was asking me what was in my glass, which is water, by the way. So sorry. Yes, and I think we did get a message from Gloria Miller, the Chair of the School Committee, asking if we would consider June. That does give more time for budgeting. I think for this board, consideration of the election and whether you want town meeting after the election or before the election is important. And of course, we moved the election, you know, last year too. But the town has started its budgeting. I think the schools are concerned with not being at a place to do that till later in the new year. So anyway, I'm happy to have it in June, if that's what the board wishes, or if you prefer May, you just need to direct us.
So I think so I think town elections are May 3rd next year.
Might be 4th. Might be the 4th. Is that a Tuesday, the first Tuesday in May?
Yes, it is. Sorry, May 4th. Yeah, it's May 4th, I was looking. So if we wanted to have it before the election, that would be at the end of April. If we wanted to have it a couple of weeks, you know, a weeks after, we could have it, you know, more towards the end of May.
So April, if we're outside, excuse me, April could have snow. So that might be something you want to think about?
I know. Yes, it could be cold. I, yeah, and also I think that's still, I mean, that's really only a month later than what we would be having our March town meeting. So I really do think if we're going to move it, we should move to the end of, the end of May or the very beginning of June, I think would make sense. So I, I don't know what people's pleasures, the last Saturday in May is May 29th. And the first Saturday is June 5th.
I would say May 29th probably isn't good, because that's Memorial Day weekend, so that might not...
It is, it isn't Memorial Day weekend. Memorial Day weekend's the weekend before.
Okay, well, the calendar I'm looking at, that Sam put in my packet, in your packet, by the way, says Memorial Day's the 31st. If that's incorrect, then...
Mine says the 24th, but you know what? I, I don't know which one now, so.
I can Google that, but this calendar says it's, I'll Google it.
Now, people are telling me it's the 31st. My calendar is wrong, so.
So I would not suggest the 29th of May.
I agree with you. We shouldn't do it the 29th of May, if that's Memorial Day weekend. So do we want to look at June 5th? Yes, no comments from anybody?
There's a question out there, Andrea, about when WA graduation is. I don't know if anyone has any, I know a lot of things are up in the air. I don't know when, if anyone can tell us typically when that might be.
Isn't it usually the first Friday in June? Yes, I just got a text that tells me that it's June 4th. Rain date, June 5th.
So how about June 12th?
I feel like that's getting a little bit...
When did we have? Jody reminds me, when did we have town meeting this year?
June 20th.
Okay. All right, Tom, go ahead. I just wanted to know that date.
If an alternative might be May 22nd, which would hop us on the other side of Memorial Day. I'm just wondering if there might be an advantage for us to, you know, try to have our plans solidified at that point, so that we've got a month before the fiscal year ends.
I'm flexible. It's really whatever you all want, we will make it happen.
Yeah, in that case, I don't feel strongly. So if if it works logistically for everyone to go to the 12th, we'll certainly have as much information as, as we can and still make our fiscal year requirement.
Yeah, you know, one of the things I was, Jody and maybe the school, so if, if if graduation is the 4th or the 5th, and we held town meeting on the 12th, could we just not likely, couldn't we leave all the, this, basically the setup on the field for a month, I mean, for a week, without having to reset everything up and have everybody do everything twice?
I have no idea, but I wouldn't make that the reason for your picking the day. I, I think they did a great, great time with it. But what day is Father's Day? Does anybody know that?
Oh geez. I, it's, it's, Father's Day is the 20th, okay?
So it sounds like May 22nd or June 12th sound like your two best options.
They, they sound like the two best options as well. I was just, when I, when I made that comment, I was just trying to save our, our town folks some, you know, just some, some work in time.
It may be an hour or two. I don't really think that should be a consideration, but.
Scott?
Just curious, I mean, assuming they actually can even have it, when is Apple Blossom? Is that the 22nd? What, what, for?
That's in May.
I know, that's what I'm saying, May 22nd, would that be Apple Blossom? Or not?
Well, if we pick it as town meeting, then they're going to have to move Apple Blossom. We got there first. I, I don't, Apple Blossom was usually, I thought, like around the second week in May.
Yeah, I think it's around like the 9th, 10th-ish.
Yeah. That's what I think it is too. That's when it usually is, or, or, so. I don't know, it seems to be...
Well, Apple Blossom is free candy, so town meeting, free candy, going to lose.
I don't know that it makes much difference whether we have it the 22nd or the 12th. And Anita?
I, I think we should go with the, with the 12th. Gives everyone a lot of extra time with COVID, any extra planning. I know school committee would prefer a later date, so if we all don't care, or have a strong opinion on it.
I just looked up, and the Apple Blossom Parade in 19 was May 18th. So it could very well possibly be May 22nd.
All right. 12th, that's good. We don't know when Apple Blossom is going to be. We don't want to interfere with Apple Blossom. We know that the 12th is available. It doesn't appear that anything else is going on the weekend of the 12th. So why don't we schedule town meeting for June 12th?
Do we need a motion? Do we need to vote on that?
Oh. Sorry. I just remembered my son's getting married, but yeah, which might be in my backyard if, if COVID's still here. But that is the 19th, so we're good.
Okay, you're sure, because we don't, we definitely don't want to interfere with your son's wedding, okay?
Well, his birthday is the 13th, so if we have a rain date, that's not going to go over well. But anyway, I think we can do the 12th.
Okay.
It isn't about me, anyway, so.
No, it would be about your son, okay? All right, wait a minute, let me just see graduation, I'm just looking at comments. Okay, so yeah, they're just telling us, all right, so let's do June 12th as town meeting with Sunday as the rain date? Which? Okay, is that good for everyone? All right. Okay.
So now that we have a date... Can you vote that, please?
Sure, can I have a motion to make, June 12th, 2021 is the date of the annual town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Sure.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we, oh, we should have added to the motion with the rain date of June 13th. Does everybody agree to that? Good. Just, just, just go thumbs up. We're not voting again, okay? Thank you. So Jody, now that we have a date, do you and Patty want to put together a timeline, like you usually do for town meetings, so that we can get that done, and we can look at that at our next, at our next meeting?
Yes, we've already done a budget timeline, but we'll put that together and get that to you soon.
Okay, all right, so, and we'll get it out to just all the town departments, I know you will, to let them know that this is, that we have chosen June 12th as our town meeting. Of course, the only person that we have not checked with to make sure she is here is our moderator. So.
I'll text, I'll text her.
Does not appear to be attending tonight's meeting, so yeah, assuming that our moderator is available, and that will be the, that will be town meeting. Okay, I think we've beaten this horse to death. Old and new business. Consider next steps following receipt of notice of intent to remove from Chapter 61B, classification and taxation of recreational land and sell the property owned by Westford Riding Academy Trust, located at 22 Griffin, Griffin Road. So I think everybody saw on our packet, we, we got a notice of the Riding Academy being subject to a purchase and sale agreement. We also got notice that it, basically, we don't really have to do anything right now, because our response time is told because of COVID. So I don't know what the pleasure of the board is. Do we just want to sit and wait for a while, or do we want to take any action at this point in time? So. Open, Jody, and then Scott.
So I just wanted to mention that typically I would send this out to all the departments and boards, and they can start discussing it if you want. I think the Conservation Commission is planning to do that, even though the notice we got was not technically the legal notice, but you know, we didn't really see a purpose to not start talking about it.
That's fine. Scott?
That's my, that's my point, that our decision is based upon input from other boards, Concom especially. So they also get the ball rolling and get their input, and then, yeah, see what happens from there.
I think that makes sense. I mean, we're going to need to get their input anyway, so why, why wait? Okay, so we will, we will get it out to the boards and committees, and we'll wait for their input. All right, joint meeting with 12 North Main Street Task Force for an update on the 12 North Main Street Limited Structural Assessment Phase II Environmental Site Assessment and Cost Estimates for Demolition and or Further Stabilization of the Building. Jody, is this you or Eric?
I think Eric is going to speak, and then there are members of the committee too. So I don't know if you want to start with Eric, who gave you a memo, and then...
Yeah, why don't we start with Eric, and then I see that Jane and Nancy are on, and our building commissioner, Henry Fontaine, is on. So Eric, if you'd like to start.
Sure, thank you. So last May, we came to you with seeking a request to hire a structural engineer to evaluate the 12 North Main Street property. Due to COVID, it took us a little longer than anticipated, but we're just wrapping up that structural analysis now. And we wanted to bring the results back to you, which are included in the, the packet, the draft report, including some cost estimates for a few different scenarios, and also to provide an update, because we were concurrently working on the Phase II Environmental Site Assessment, which was funded through a mass development brownfields grant. And we actually have run into a situation where we're unable at this point to finalize that Phase II site assessment, because we can't safely get the LSP into the building to conclude or to complete the subsurface ground testing that's required due to the deterioration of the building. So we asked Henry Fontaine to provide an updated memo for the packet, which is included. We've also asked him to be here tonight to speak and answer any questions you might have. And I think Jane also wants to add some to as well.
Okay. Jane?
Hi, everybody. I don't know whether you already had a chance to look through the memo I sent along, and along with the memo that Henry sent along, as well as Eric's report on the numbers, the preliminary numbers that we got from CBI Consultants. You know, the numbers on their face are going to look pretty dreary. They're not surprising. They're falling into the categories we've sort of always anticipated in terms of what it would cost to tear the building down. You know, they don't really include the things that the, the community would have to do if we did make that decision ultimately, because we can't really just tear it down and leave a big hole in the ground. So, but that information aside, you will deliberate and you'll make a decision based on finances, which I understand are pretty slim. We, in the meantime, one of the things that Nancy and I asked of our Economic Development Committee members was to keep a line open, a line of communication open with ownership of the 10 North Main Street parcels. As we've indicated in many, many conversations, we've always felt that they were the key to any development. They really, their mere presence and their not, their lack of willingness to sell their property really didn't allow for proper marketing of 12 North Main to other developers, because it was always considered too complicated. So rather than repeat myself on all of that sort of thing, we're basically looking for a Hail Mary pass here. We asked Eric what it would cost to issue the broad RFP one more time. We did have very serious conversations with the 10 people, and we indicated to them that, given the financial situation, that our community, as well as communities across the state, as well as the state coppers, as well as the federal coppers, are all tragically in a bad place because of COVID, that we weren't sure that the Board of Selectmen wasn't going to make a decision to not further pursue the project, or moving the project into private hands, and that it very well may be torn down. So they are very well versed in the fact that, should it be torn down, their, the impact of that on their property would be enormous. You know, if 12 is torn down, basically that campus, if you will, would lose the ability to develop 32,000 square feet of space, because those setbacks would disappear once the building came down. There's no way to sort of say, oh, yeah, that's a great idea to build right on the corner of Broadway. It's not going to happen. So they promised, both in writing and verbally, in two different conference calls, one of which I was on, to respond to this RFP, to open the door to appropriately speak to decision makers. They've been very frustrated that we're not a city government, and we don't function that way. And we've explained to them that the RFP We've explained to them that the RFP process is tantamount and that's how we function, so. They are finally gonna, you know, take notice of this and I told them, I said, the clock is ticking, I have no idea what the board's going to decide. But at a minimum, in order to fund any decision they might make, that would be in May. Because I did anticipate you making a decision for town meeting in May, so. The task force met, we met virtually this week, this. Last week, Thursday, it's all running together and. Everybody unanimously voted to ask for the hail mary of the one left, the release of one more RFP. That Eric and I might review it one final time, just to make the right adjustments and that. We can shorten up our timeline for responses, we would certainly be open to any, it's a public process, we'd be open to any responses. But that at least we know that 10 has promised to respond this time, so. Those are my thoughts, if anybody has any questions, Eric?
No, I get to do that, Jane.
I'm just learning.
Eric?
I just wanted to mention and clarify one other part, so as I mentioned. Because we're unable to complete that phase two environmental site assessment, which is funded through a state grant. The deadline for the expenditure of those funds is actually December 31st. And given what we know, the information right now and the estimated cost to stabilize the building. We're kind of in a predicament right now because it's unlikely that we could finish that work in that timeframe, so. That's why we wanted to bring it to your attention to let you know, you know, we have an issue, we're going to hopefully work with Brownfields to seek another extension, but we've already received one already.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Jody?
Well, I know I'm not the board, but you know, I think my concern is, you know, Eric pulled up a recap. We've spent about a half million dollars, more than a half million on this facility since we've been trying to. Secure it, sell it, so on, I think we've been out with four RFPs. The only response that I recall, well, I think we might have gotten one from Chris Franklin once, but, but that didn't pan out and Chris Yule. Who backed out, so no one has been interested in purchasing this property, even for a dollar. The, the owners of 10 North Main remain interested, but I think it's because their property has really no value unless they are hooked on to whatever the town does with 12. But they have tried to get economic development to convince the town to have our engineers. Engineer different things for them, like a septic and a parking lot and all that, but that's not what town staff does, we don't work for developers, we work for the town. So that has, has not gone anywhere, so my concern, which I think Eric has articulated, is number one, we're about to lose. The remaining funds on the grant to do the site assessment and number two, from what I understand from Eric. We need about 350,000 more money to stabilize the building to continue the site assessment. So that's where we're at right now and I don't know what issuing another RFP is going to do with the current state that we're in. Henry has sent a couple of letters, one again recently, that the building is in danger of collapse, it is not safe. So it's really, does the board want us to continue to seek more funding to throw at that building or? Do you feel we've given it a shot? It just continues to deteriorate, so it's not that I didn't try to save it, but no one's been interested in redevelopment and it's just continued to fall, fall down.
Thanks. Comments? Let me ask about from the board first, Jane, before I get back to you, okay, Tom, I think you had your, Tom?
So this might be a question for Eric, I just want to make sure I understand, given the precarious state of that building. Like what would have to happen to successfully go through with an RFP, I mean. Is the, are the requirements that we would have and can we even do it, I guess is my question, given how sort of dangerous that building site appears to be?
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
So we certainly could put up another RFP, very similar to what we did last time, it's a 30 day posting, the cost is minimal. But as Jody alluded to, we, we may not have another positive result similar to what we've had in the past. You know, I think the, the main concern from developers has been the unknown contamination at the site. And unfortunately, we're unable to confirm the contamination because we can't get into the building to finalize the phase two.
So realistically, Eric, there's no way someone could responsibly make a bid and understand the costs they would face. Because they can't get in there because it's not safe.
So they likely would submit a proposal with many contingencies. One might be that the town be required to assist with hazardous material cleanup. I can only imagine that there would be many contingencies that would must be met for somebody to close on the property, given the unknowns.
Nancy, oh, well, actually Jane, I don't know whichever one of you wants to speak.
Nothing can happen to take it down in 30 days, right, Henry, by the time we found somebody to do that and secured the funding to do that. The 30 days would be up, so for a few hundred dollars, we could put out an RFP and see if 10 is serious this time. What do we have to lose but a few hundred dollars, not thousands, Jody, I realize we've spent a lot, but a few hundred.
Go ahead, Jody.
I, and I'm not opposed to putting out another RFP, I just think the board needed to understand. Where we're at right now and what is on the horizon, I'm perfectly happy to put out the fifth RFP and maybe this will be the miracle purchaser. But we are shoveling money at this building and it appears it will continue and if we do have to take it down. Eric's estimates are over a million dollars, so this is, this is a money pit, I, there's no other way to, you know, kind of classify it.
Mark?
Yeah, Henry, is this thing, or Eric, is this going to survive the winter?
I'll let Henry speak to that.
He's on mute, go.
Henry, you're on mute.
Try now.
You're still on mute.
How's that?
Much better.
Okay, so. I mean, it's impossible to tell whether the building will come down this winter or not. I walked the building twice in the last month. The cracks are still there, the buildings are leaning a little bit in the back wall, but. You, you don't know, you don't know how much snow we're going to get, how much rain we're going to get and what, what the weather will actually do to it, so. To give you an answer on that, I don't think, I don't think I could or I should really.
So I guess my comment is, I don't know why we would not do an RFP, to be honest with you. You know, I don't know whose pockets we're going to get a million dollars in to demolish this thing without giving it at least another shot of. Trying to get an RFP, so I think it's a bit of a no brainer, to be honest.
Other comments from the board? Jane, I know you're not the board, but nobody on the board raised their hand, so.
Just to address a comment that Jody made earlier, I had a second. Conversation with the 10 North Main Group this past week and I was very specific with them about the processes for. Inquiring about septic capacity, they're not really looking for a septic design so much as they think because they've not worked with. These kinds of things before, as amazing as that sounds, given the sophistication of some of their projects, they've never been in the country before. And, you know, I think, given that with the passing of Doug Bell. Although he was part of a partnership, only one person really can drive the bus on any given day, so I think Doug was always driving that bus. And was a little bit up in the clouds a lot of the time and also dealing with a terminal illness and he has since passed and I imagine that. They have made estate distributions and I have a feeling that Blair Kalinsky, who is one of the managing partners of that group. Has sort of taken the helm and is now driving the bus, so I've had some pretty direct conversations with him. And their counsel about process and, you know, their need to retain attorneys about tax credits, that they shouldn't take that information from me. They need to deal with the kinds of people that can properly advise them independently so that they're making the right decision. But that, you know, we're not going to be using town assets to design anything. But if they had questions of Jeff Stevens about the different things they're considering. I find it hard to believe that Jeff couldn't take a phone call for some direction, but they're not, they understand that their engineers will be. That they will be developing the property, that the town is not a real estate developer, that they are offering. Our last iconic mill to be developed as part of their development of their property and. The only way that that is going to happen is for them to acquire it. And they are well versed in that at this point, and again, we use the expression, the clock is ticking. They're not going to be looking to us for resources, but I don't think anybody would be surprised at any developer that wouldn't ask the town to clean up the toxic waste. We have the ability to apply for grants and. Super fund money that private developers don't have the ability to do, so. I imagine those kinds of things are going to come up and those have always been part of our conversations since John Manchurati started. The ball rolling on this long before I took it over, when he left the town's employ, so. You know, that, those kinds of things wouldn't surprise me, but I'm hoping there's going to be some sort of creative solution. That allows us to spend less than what it would cost to tear the building down. I mean, we, we see the numbers to tear the building down, it is a big number out there. And if we can spend one third of that, I'm a happy girl, I mean, I, as a taxpayer. So I'd really like to use this hail mary, I kind of love that we have this time constraint that's going to force them to really negotiate and work on this. Because frankly, it's, you know, it's time, it makes sense, so that's why I'm hopeful that this last RFP may indeed induce their response. And then, and like I said publicly and responsibly, anybody else's response as well, so.
Okay, so, um. What's the pleasure of the board, it sounds like, you know, putting out, Scott, were you going to say something, were you, or just?
Yeah, I think. It's an old expression, nothing focuses the mind like a hanging. And this is a point, I think, where that building is ready to get hung, so. I would hope that the, you know, this RFP goes out and it's time to. Yeah, either do it or not, because I.
There's a very crude saying I could say, but I won't because we're on TV right now.
I was not going to go there, because this is, this is septic, you can't, you can't do that. But I think the RFP is the way to go and if it doesn't come back, well, it's going to fall out if we don't take it down, so let's try to find. Some, you know, some means here to save it and hopefully reduce our cost of dealing with it.
I, I agree with you and with Mark, I mean, you know, not, one last shot, let's take one last shot, it really doesn't cost us anything. Other than a couple of hundred dollars, some, some time from, from Eric, which I know is not, you know. I don't want to, you know, underplay that, you know, it's, it is certainly some time and effort you're going to have to put into it, but. I think it sounds like it's, you know, let's try it once more and if nothing happens, then at least we can all say we, we, we tried our best and we did our best, Henry?
Is there going to be a timeline with this RFP? On when you're going to get a response to it or when somebody might actually be doing something with it? Because the longer we wait, the, the unsafe of the building is.
Yeah, I mean, Eric, I believe it's, it's a 30 day time period, right? Yeah, Eric, can you just walk, walk, walk us through the time period, the timeline, please?
So the earliest that we likely could get it out would be next Wednesday, if not the following Wednesday, it's a 30 day posting in the central register. We could do the minimum amount of time, get proposals back and have the review group review them within, within a week or two. And then get back to the board with what we have for results.
I think that makes sense, I think we should give them the, you know, I know it's 30 days posting, we should give a minimal amount of time to respond, you know. We just don't want this going on, you know, forever and again, I think as, as Jane said, you know. You're either going to make a proposal or you're not going to make a proposal and you don't need two months to decide that. You basically, you know, the RFP goes out, you make your decision, you either, you either, you either submit a response or you don't and that's it and we're done. So Anita?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that when I was reading all the materials in our packet related to this, I definitely was like, we are like hemorrhaging money. With this particular property and, you know, I would support an RFP, but I guess, and I'm the only person who's the newest one to this project. And I wouldn't want to take up too much more of our time on this topic, but kind of thinking about when you're structuring the RFP, you know, if this is our fifth RFP going out. Or I assume, this goes without saying, that it's going to be structured in some sort of way that's going to. You know, whatever lessons learned from the past four other RFP releases that will be applied to this and I don't know if there's, if that would even make sense or not in this case, if we already know someone who might be interested in. Applying for it, but then, like whatever we can do to learn from the past, right, to. Get this off our plate would be nice.
Nancy?
I'll be quick, Anita, some of the problems are environmental, some of the people walked away because of the neighbors. I mean, there is another problem besides the environment that is the elephant in the room that we also have to address, but. It isn't, isn't just environmental, so we, you know, we do have a lot of work ahead of us, but hopefully in 30 days, we can do something.
Thanks. Okay, Tom?
Do you need a motion on this, Andrew?
I do, yes, please, thank.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to pursue the process as Eric described to issue this RFP.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, I think we've, we've discussed this, so all those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you all, appreciate it, thank you, Eric, I know we just put a little bit more work on your lap, but thank you very much, we, we appreciate it. And thanks, Henry, for being here tonight, so thank you all.
You're welcome, have a good night.
All right, um. We have a request to appoint Marco Lawler to the Agricultural Commission as a full member for a term to expire on June 30th, 2023, is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay, we have a request from the Permanent Town Building Committee to appoint the following, Scott Hazelton is a full member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. Jim Zegelwitz as a full member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2022. Berta McGuire is an alternate member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. And Chris Karpinski is an alternative member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Um. Then we have review house bill number 4235, which is, drumroll. An act amending the charter of the town of Westford in preparation for the governor's support approval of the bill and the bill is to change the name of the. Select Board of Selectmen to the Select Board and also to change the language of our charter to make it inclusionary, so. We, we got this marked up version from the, from, I don't know who, from the House, from the governor, from somebody. But Jody, if you want, I know you forwarded it to John Giorgio to look at, so if you just want to report, that would be helpful.
Yes, there's really no substantive changes to that, it's just, you know. Formatting, so I would recommend that you approve it and we'll see if we. So, uh, I would recommend that you approve it, and we'll see if we can't get the governor signed it and get your name legally changed.
Great. So do we, do you need a motion for that, Jody, that we?
Yes, yep, you accept, uh, the House Bill 4235 as, um, in your packet.
So is, is there a motion that we accept House 4235 as, uh, provided to us?
So moved.
Second.
Second? One of you seconded?
Second.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Uh, yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, our consent agenda. Um, we have a request to, uh, approve, uh, the annual nativity display on the town common. Um, the applicant is Kelly Olson. The date is from Thursday, November 26th, uh, 2020, to Thursday, December 31st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor, um, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Um, minutes, we have executive session minutes from October 27th, uh, 27th, 2010. Let's try that again. We have executive session minutes from October 27th, 2020, uh, for approval, but not for release. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Uh, yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, board reports and updates. Anita, I know you want to, uh, update us and report on the first meeting of the DEI committee.
Yeah, it went really well. We, I don't remember what day it was, because every day kind of blurs together. But we're gonna meet again on the 18th, um, at 6:30. And so our first meeting was a lot of sort of foundational information, kind of background stuff about open meeting law, um, how to, um, operate as a town committee. And also, we reviewed some of the top interest areas, um, that we pulled out from the, from the applications, from the committee members. And so our next steps from that is to take a vote of what their top priority areas are. So they may, um, consider structuring into subcommittees. We're gonna elect officers during our next meeting. And, um, I wanted to just update the board that we did, um, put forward, the Indigenous Peoples' Day, asked from the town, and so that's something that they're gonna be considering and ranking, um, amongst of the other interest areas that, um, they're gonna prioritize, and they'll let us know.
Great. All sounds really exciting.
Yep.
All right, um, does anybody else have any other board reports or updates? Okay, seeing none. Um, town managers' report, Jody?
Yes, um, I wanted to announce that the Recycling Commission received a Sustainable Materials Recovery Program grant, uh, in the amount of $1,250 from the Mass DEP for small, for a small-scale initiative. And I asked to, uh, for your approval for two purchase orders, one for Stryker for Lucas, three chest compression systems in the amount of $44,810.40 for the fire department, and DeMullis Market gift cards for Thanksgiving holiday basket, um, purchases through CARE Act funds in the amount of $10,525, as requested by the council on aging.
Um, I, I have one question, Jody. Um, with respect to the, um, gift cards, um, uh, to the CARES Act, I know that, that amount that the council of aging asked for was based upon the applications that they've reviewed to date and, and certified. I guess my only question was, and since I believe we, we do have CARES fact, CARES Act funds, um, i- is that sufficient? Should we, like, ask for, you know, a little bit more in case a few more families come forward between now and the holidays whom we might want to help out? Um, I, I just want to make sure that, you know, if there is anybody who, between now and, you know, Thanksgiving or, or any of the holidays, we find out is in need, that we can help them out as well.
You know, I'm only bringing forth the requests that they made. I did have Dan O'Donnell work with them, uh, to make sure that everything, you know, looked appropriate. Uh, but I, I do not know if you'd like to go with a higher figure. Uh, but I, I really can't answer whether, uh, they need a cushion there.
Tom, and then Scott?
Along those lines, I was wondering if there's still time to make an additional request or a second request, if they do get additional requests in.
Uh, so I don't know the deadline to, uh, apply or fill out the forms for the CARES Act off the top of my head. Um, certainly, you are meeting on 11/24, but I, I can't answer that question. I don't know.
Scott?
That's, that's my question, which was, you know, can they, uh, apply for a second amount? And how difficult is that to, to do? Um, yeah, that.
It's, it's really based on the application period that, that there were due into the state. Um, but, I mean, if you want to take a vote to approve and go higher, um, to a certain amount, if feasible, you certainly could do that and give some more flexibility. Um, but I, I don't have the answers to those questions tonight.
I, I, part of my problem is I, I don't know what, what amount, you know, if we, what amount we should do, okay?
Well, what, what's the denomination of the gift cards?
Wait, Jody?
Excuse me, Jennifer Claro just texted me and said they don't, do not need any more funds.
Okay, I guess that answers that question.
But, um, would you like to know what the denomination is, Scott?
No, no, I was just thinking, if he wanted to augment it, how much per family was being allocated, that would be.
Roughly $90.
Okay.
Well, she said we don't need any more funds, so.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, um, is there a motion to approve the two purchase orders?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Jody?
And just before you, uh, close out the meeting, I did hear from the moderator, and she is available on June 12th with June 13 raid date, so.
Great. Scott?
I don't recall. We also have to accept the grant. Is that true, Jody? We didn't vote, or is it because of the mouth swallow, we don't, it doesn't matter?
You do not need to accept the grant. Sometimes you do, you don't need to. If you'd like to, you may, but you don't need to accept that grant.
So I just want to make sure we're legal at the phone.
You're legal.
The clerk's dropped, but, you know, I'll fill in for Mark.
The clerk's on it, don't worry.
Okay, um, is there a motion to waive reading of correspondence?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There's, okay, we'll just buy a raise of hands. All those in favor? All right, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you all very much. Um, thank you to everybody who participated. Good night, Westford, and everybody stay safe.
Good night.